Hello, everyone. I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular meeting in City Hall at six P M. And before we do any other business, we need to approve the amended agenda. So I'll take a motion to amend. I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Okay, Brittany makes the motion. Ted makes the second.
We need roll call. Did we do?
Well, shouldn't we do the amended first? Do we need to roll call first? Okay, roll call. Thank you. Red Hawk, here. Buck?
Yeah.
Human?
Here.
Yeah. Here.
Okay, now we go to the amended. So can we go ahead and stick with that motion? Okay, and Ted made the second and is there any discussion? All in favor of approval? I, what the record show, is is approved. All right, now we go on to preview of minutes. Any corrections, changes? Take a motion to approve.
I move approval of the last month's minutes, April nineteenth.
Second.
Okay. Rick makes the motion. Matthew makes the second. All in favor or any discussion? All in favor? I. That is approved. All right. Welcome to the public. We have a number of things on our agenda, and when it's something of interest for you each time, I will allow public comment. So our new business is agenda item three A. The twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four Planning Commission work program. So John, you want to introduce it?
Yes, I can, Ben. I'm chairman. At the last meeting, I had informed the planning commission that I would take a look at the city's master plan in terms of the implementation strategies that were outlined in chapter six and put together what I thought would be some priority action items that the planning commission could start working on as part of your annual work program. The three that I selected, you have twelve themes in the implementation chapter and one hundred and sixty-three actionable items. So a lot of those, I selected three. The first one was basically the action item in your plan was to continue to utilize the International Property Maintenance Code to improve properties and eliminate blight. And I am recommending that the planning commission in assistance with the consultant and the city staff prepare a housing quality assessment to determine what areas in the city may need assistance. I believe this would help position the city in the future to use certain housing-related programs such as the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone in the Housing Rehabilitation Districts that were just approved in January of this year. Primarily because Potaski is one of one hundred core communities identified by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for certain qualified programs. Without doing a housing quality assessment, it's awful. It's difficult to target areas where you would want selective code enforcement and areas that you would want to use certain tax incentives or abatement programs in order to assist and encourage property owners to rehabilitate their homes. The second action item is that I'm recommending that we create a committee of the planning commission, much like what we did for the short-term rental ordinance. And that committee would take a look at the potential to enact or recommend the inaction or the action to the city council to create a formal rental inspection program. This would be done once we complete the housing quality assessment to determine the extent of rental properties in the city. And the rental inspection program would be used to make sure that the properties are improved and that they're maintained by those that rent the properties to residents in the community. The third action item is also housing related to some degree, and it involves the zoning ordinance. The city is going to apply in October, the beginning of the state fiscal cycle to M E D C for money under the R R C, the Redevelopment Ready Program, to amend and revise the city zoning ordinance. To get ready for that, I'm recommending that we have a steering committee that starts taking a look at district consolidation, minimum spot sizes, lot coverage, building heights, and housing typologies by district. The reason why I recommend steering committees or subcommittees of the planning commission is that we're able to meet more often, and those folks that are on the committees with me, we can gain greater insight into the topics so we can bring back formal recommendations to the committee as all. So the planning commission can have a more comprehensive review of the topic. So that's the action program that I've suggested to the planning commission for twenty-three, twenty-four as part of the implementation of the community master plan.
Okay, thank you. I bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Question for John. Does that first action item require, or would that involve hiring a consultant to do that kind of a of an assessment, or is that staff done?
The combination of myself working with staff.
Okay.
Yeah. Putting the methodology together that we can do the the assessment. This is not going to be a property by property. It'll be based on information that the city has along with a windshield survey and looking at census data.
Okay. Thanks.
Ted?
Yeah, another question on action item one that Commissioner Newen was talking about. So the consultant in the city would be trying to determine areas that are blighted or need assistance. I mean, these are not necessarily exactly always the same thing. I mean, an area can be blighted. It may or may not have someone who has the ability to fix that. So I'm a little unclear.
Well, Commissioner, it's a kind of a combination of both. It's one, taking a look at housing quality in terms of trying to isolate by neighborhood areas that have that we would identify as stable. And then I try to identify neighborhoods that need assistance in terms of rehabilitation. There can be blighted properties in stable neighborhoods as well as in neighborhoods that need assistance. But as we go through the process, we can identify both. So and start building a record of that. That's why this is usually a housing quality assessment at the neighborhood level. It's a combination of consultant and staff bringing together both of their areas of expertise to identify both housing quality concerns and areas that may see a certain degree in number of blighted properties. So.
So I get that part where you would assess in in some way determine which properties were deemed as in need of repair or blighted. Meaning assistance is a different issue. You have to have more information.
Yes, but what happens is when you do the housing quality assessment, let's say we localize eight or ten blocks within the city that have a high degree of need for improvements. Then we can discuss with the city council if they want to utilize several different programs available by the state at the neighborhood level, which encourage people to renovate their properties. And in doing so, they would be able to receive an abatement on the level of improvements that they make to the property. So we isolate the neighborhoods, we determine what the degree of problem is, and then we come back to the planning commission and the city council with what tools are available at the state that we can use in those neighborhoods to encourage property owners to make the rehabilitations, to try to make them as reasonable as possible. In addition, because of the income median income of the city, the city could possibly also qualify for community development block grants and actually have a housing rehabilitation program that provides financial assistance to people to renovate their properties. But we won't know that until we do the assessment.
How does that then play into a property that's single-family home ownership versus rental property? Is there a difference or not?
Not in terms of the abatements, no. In terms of rental property, if the, and I don't want to get too far ahead of the commission, but much of the properties in the city were built prior to nineteen forty. And a significant amount of them, I know that we already have the Mitchell Street, Lake Street Historic District, but areas on the south side of the city over on Jackson, Madison, and those streets would also qualify for National Register status. Now, income property owners that have, that are located in a National Register District have access to the IRS Historic Income Tax Tax Credit, which is twenty percent, and then the state provides an additional five. But that's on income property only. But that's a great incentive for a rental property owner to rehabilitate their properties according to the historic guidelines to get a twenty-five percent return, dollar for dollar, back from the federal government.
Charlie?
Yeah, when you were describing action item number two, you were referring to the rental programs. Would this assessment also be determining which were owned properties and which were rental properties versus the licensed short-term rental property?
Correct. We would try to make that determination at that level.
And the tools that you use to do that?
A variety of tools. That's where we work with the city. I mean, their information on code enforcement issues of the past, building, you know, permits that have been issued by the county, if they've been issued to this property owner or a property owner that's running the property. So it's just a little bit of paperwork and investigation to try to make that determination. The more qualitative and the more granular we get on the data, the better the strategy is relative to going after the appropriate funding and tax-making programs.
So if I understood your recommendations, number one would be staff and consultancy. Number two would be under the auspices of a steering committee.
Correct.
And number three would be under the auspices of a steering committee.
That's correct. Both steering committees would be from the planning commission.
All right. On action item number three, we've spent some time already talking about district consolidation. How does this relate to the time that we've always spent in terms of?
It would be a continuation of that conversation.
And the work that we've done is that on hold and with, you know, as, you know, obviously from your perspective, from your input, the work that we've done is that on hold until we, until the steering group was was put together?
Yeah, I think once the steering committee was put together, then we bring, you bring forth the information that the planning commission's already talked about within the steering committee, and then we go from there. We use that as the springboard to continue that conversation.
When I hear number three, it seems like this is really the one of the fundamental responsibilities of the commission.
Yes.
And one of, I guess, my initial response is a little concerned that it's in a smaller group versus the whole group. Could you just kind of speak to your opinions on the value of having it in a steering committee versus out here and having you know, a broader input from the very initial stages?
Well, typically, when you do the zoning code, we would have a kickoff meeting at the planning commission level to identify for the planning commission to identify areas of concern that they have with the current code. Okay, we start with that. Then we move it into the steering committee, and the committee can meet like on every other week basis versus once a month like the planning commission does. It's just a way of going through the document quicker and bringing back full drafts that have been reviewed and picked apart by the steering committee to the P C. It's just like the process that we used on the short-term rental ordinance. I would estimate that based on the amount of time that was spent by the subcommittee, and then we had kind of two iterations digitally on email, we probably were able to compress the review time on the short-term rental probably by three to four months just by doing that process. And that's kind of how, you know, when I typically work out with the community on a zoning code, it's usually at the committee level, and periodically we keep the committee at four planning commission members. But sometimes one of the four at any time can rotate out. So if a planning commissioner has a personal area of interest in the zoning code, when we get to that, then they would come in and sit down as part of the subcommittee, and one person would you know, be, you know, like a revolving door. There are some people on planning commissions that are very detailed oriented that want to get into like the dimensional requirements, the bulk requirements. There are other planning commissioners that want to talk broader scale in terms of like district consolidation and maybe new zoning districts. And when we get into those topics, then based on people's area of interest, they get into the committee. But I find that the committee can accelerate a zoning rewrite by months, if not maybe by a year. Because it's a very lengthy document to go through.
Bettany?
Is your recommendation that we work on multiple action items at once, or are we choosing the highest priority right now?
No, we work on them all together.
Okay.
So I'm asking for two subcommittees. I would imagine it would pretty much be four people on one committee, four people on another. So almost all the planning commission, to some degree, would be involved in various actionable items. Your master plan content, it was extremely well done by the planning commission and by Amy. My concern about it is not the twelve themes, but it's the hundred and sixty-three action items. You do not have the capacity to do one hundred and sixty-three action items. So I went through and tried to really prioritize the ones that would have the most meaningful immediate impact for the community, and those all focus around one zoning and two of them focus around housing.
Any other discussion?
Do we need to make a motion to accept this?
Well, that's one.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to accept the proposed twenty-three, twenty-four planning commission work program. It's outlined by Jim.
Second.
Okay, so Rick makes the motion. Charlie seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and opposed? Okay.
And Chair, let's just.
Yes.
Can we, while we're on the subject, can we decide who's going to be on the committees?
All right, are people ready to volunteer? So the first item is the well, you don't want, just for number two and three, we're looking for steering committee members. All right, so the rental inspection program.
I'd be happy to.
Okay, Bettany, Matthew. We're looking for four members. Rick?
I'd prefer to be on the third or the second.
Me and Rich.
Committee.
Right.
Who's on the committee?
Bettany, Matthew, and Rich. So let's move on to the zoning ordinance requirements. Rick? Charlie? Ted and Carolyn. All right, I also would like to be a part of that.
And only have four.
Okay.
Or else we have to do, we can do five if you want to do open meetings, but.
Seriously, will you go up to the rental inspection program?
Rotate in to either committee as media.
Can I put you down for the for the initial steering committee for the rental inspection?
And not this time.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie. All right, well, we have three for the rental inspection program. And then Rick, Ted, Carolyn, and Cynthia for the
I mean, zones are preferable time. Everybody like to meet in the evening? Or the afternoon? I don't know what you're.
Well, first off, is everybody available in the afternoon? Raise your hand if you're not.
Depends on the day.
Why take one committee at a time?
All right. So for the rental inspection program.
I just have to find a sitter if.
Okay.
If it's during the day.
You to be evening?
Yeah, it just, I've got sports going on.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
It just depends on.
Rich, do you have any?
I'm relatively flexible after majority evenings.
Okay. What?
Let me, go ahead. Let me make a suggestion. What I'll do is I've got the names on the committee. I will send up a doodle poll out to the committee members, and then you guys can pick day and you can pick times. And then we can, we can start from there with putting a calendar together, okay?
Okay.
All right, cool.
Okay. And then for the zoning, that's Rick, Ted, Carolyn, Cynthia. So can you meet during the day or? Ted, can you meet during the day?
Most days.
Okay. And how about you, or have a free question? Okay, and I can meet during the day, so. Moving on. Moving on to old business. We have for a, an old business public hearing on case number two dash two-three, rezoning request for parcel C from R two, single-family district to I one light industrial district to match the zoning of parent parcel C, which is adjacent to sixteen twenty-four Clarion Avenue. John?
Yes, ma'am. Chair, there's a staff memo sent to your packet regarding the project. The gentleman, Brian Halls, the applicant. He owns a parcel of property on Clarion. Actually, it's a it's a public road unnamed off of Clarion. You can see it on the map on page two of the staff memo. You can see the parcel in a little bit more detail. It's a very small piece compared to his other property, which is zoned I one, which is parcel two oh one zero five eight. He would like to rezone parcel two oh one dash zero five nine to I one, so both of his properties are under the same zoning designation. The properties adjacent to him are all zoned light industrial. The property that's above the ridge line, that orange dash line is the approximate ridge line, which is probably has a fifty-foot elevation between the properties that face Clarion and the properties above it. And it is not in conflict with the master plan. And the properties in that area, the majority of them along this side of this area of Clarion are all zoned light industrial. And our recommendation is that from our perspective, it doesn't conflict with the master plan. It's consistent with zoning in the area. And, you know, that's my my read on the application.
Okay. With Brian Hall? Is he here? Okay. If you would like to speak, you're welcome to. Is he on the Zoom? All right, so I bring it to the commission. Any questions, discussion? Rich?
Yeah, I'm just curious why that section wasn't zoned light industrial to begin with? Why is it residential?
I have. I don't know.
Just wonder if there's a reason for that.
Charlie?
Just for clarity, on the Emmett County equalization view, the, it looks like L shape, but that's the road. The long, narrow part is the road, right? In other words, two oh one zero five nine, it's just not finished off as a perfect rectangle there. It's, you see what I'm saying?
It's, that's the, that's a public.
So that's the public easement?
Yes, there's no name to it, but that's public.
Okay.
That long linear strip that connects in with Clarion Avenue.
It's like a driveway. So the rectangle was just simply not finished on that drawing. Got it. Thank you.
It actually is, but it's hard to see because it's a gray line. Yeah, it's hard to see. Any other discussion? Are we ready to make a motion? Oh, that's right. I am sorry, public. All right. I open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Anyone online? So no comment? Okay, I close the public hearing. What? Did somebody say? Oh, okay.
I wanted to comment on the last. Doesn't matter.
His comment was on the previous discussion.
I guess I'll wait, I'll wait till discussion at the end.
Okay. So no comments for the public hearing. So I close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
I'll make a motion to recommend to city council that parcel fifty-two nineteen zero seven two oh one zero fifty-nine be rezoned from light industrial I one to R two, single-family to match the parent parcel.
Excuse, I hate to interrupt, but did you mean to change? You said from L one to R two.
This, this is the suggested motion we're approving. Do you want to read that?
Oh, I, okay, sorry, I reversed it. My apology. Yeah, in case number two dash twenty-three, I make a motion so that the request to rezone parcel fifty-two nineteen oh seven two oh one zero fifty-nine from R two, single family to L one light industrial be recommended to city council for approval based on the facts presented and the finding that the request is consistent with the city master plan, the future land use map and zoning plan, and that the rezoning will not adversely affect surrounding properties.
I'll second.
Okay, Rick makes the motion. Ted seconds. Roll call?
Robson?
Yes.
Moonma?
Yes.
Red Hawk?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Detmer?
Yes.
McSweeney?
Yes.
Meridian?
Lewis.
Newman?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to old business, number four, B. Site plan amendment for loss at Wunder Square, nine hundred Emmett. Zoning administrators, what, am I doing something?
No, I just need to, I have a conflict of interest as we own a business within three hundred feet, so I need to recuse myself.
Okay, and is there anyone else with a conflict of interest?
I have to refuse myself at this point.
Okay.
Ma'am Chairman, I don't believe it's a conflict of interest, but I would like to disclose a connection. The developer, the Hoffs Han Development, in its normal course of business interacts with Uh, the developer, the Hoffs Han Development, uh, in its normal course of business interacts with banks. And seeks financing. I am, I am an employee of a bank. And Han Development is a customer of the bank that I work at. Our bank has provided finance, financing to an affiliated company of Han Development. Uh, the loan was unrelated to the loss at Lumber Square. And, uh, and, uh, and the, uh, the outcome of the loss at Lumber Square. Was not a factor in us, uh, doing our other loan with Han Developments. And that I received and will receive no financial gain. Or, uh, loss as a result of the success or failure of the law, of the lost project.
Okay. Uh, so how does the commission see this? Does anyone believe there's a conflict of interest? Yeah. Do we need to vote on? Whether it's a conflict of interest?
We can.
All right. Um. So. All in favor of having him stay on and, and, um, agreeing that it's not a conflict of interest?
All right.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for disclosing. All right, uh. So Lisa, do you wanna? Do an overview?
So, um, as you recall, I think the fifth, the, um, applicant came before the planning commission, um, a special meeting and was given approval for a site plan amendment, um, with conditions. Those list, uh, conditions are listed in the agenda. Memo, um, staff did note changes that were identified on the current drawings compared to those that were, um, approved with conditions at the April fifth meeting. Those changes include. Um, shortening the divider wall at the southeast end of the building and. To avoid any conflict with the encroaching on the sidewalk. The divider wall at the southwest end of the building has been removed. One parking space has been reduced, or it has been reduced by one parking space, um, to sixty two spaces, but there are six on street spaces approved. So they still meet their sixty eight parking spaces that are required. Twenty eight bike parking spaces are indicated on the new drawings. Um, access to the Greenway corridor has been removed. Um, trees have been added along the southwest side of the parking area. As well as Fulton Street, the ones that had been removed have been replaced. Dwarf are providing have been added to either side of Emmett Street parking lot entrance and significant landscaping has been added around the exterior of the building and around the courtyard. Um, facade changes. Include addition of window overhangs, stone sills and stone headers on along Emmett and Fulton Streets. Indoor overhangs have been added along entrances of the courtyard. The parapet height has been increased two feet. On the bump out portions of the building, increasing the overall height to thirty five feet. The standard allows for a maximum height of thirty seven feet, so it is within the standards that has been met. And then exterior, um, materials have been updated with vinyl and aluminum siding, stone panel system, veneer brick, vinyl windows and composite trim and fascia.
Okay. I bring it back to the commission, um. Tonight, we're just approving. We're going over and possibly approving the current. Design.
The, the sad changes that you have requested.
So she did request if we open these big things to turn off our microphone while we open.
Thank you.
Also, ready to put on the screen?
Yes. Shane, could I bother you to, um?
Make you the presenter?
Yes, please. I believe Corey has co-host. Permissions at the moment.
Uh. Well, he's trying to get that right, but yeah, they're gonna put the screen.
Yeah.
And can you state your name?
Uh, yes. Uh, Andrew Scorefar, um, on development. Uh, good evening commissioners and, uh, nice to see you again. Um, also have a, a few folks with me, um, my colleague Corey Monroe, uh, Jane McKenzie, executive director of Northern Homes, uh, Community Development Corporation. Uh, eventual owner, operator of the project, uh, Sarah Ford with the Petaskey Harbor Springs Area Community Foundation, um, our kind of key sponsor of the project and landowner. And then we have Eric and Brian with Hooker De Young, our architect, uh, joining us by Zoom. Um, as, uh, Lisa mentioned, since the special, uh, planning commission on April fifth. Um, really, our team is, has worked to refine the exterior facade in response to the feedback that, um, we received at that meeting. Um, really feel the updates, uh, this evening, um, uh, have done a good job incorporating what we heard, um, and ultimately will. Further ensure the project, uh, fits into the fabric of the neighborhood. Uh, I won't go into too much detail on the updates as Lisa's done a thorough job of, kind of reviewing those in her staff report. I'm although I hit on a few quick ones just that we've incorporated that I feel like, um, can, can be recapped. Um, as Lisa mentioned, we increased the height of the building. Um, that was a direct kind of conversation that we had during that meeting. About providing additional screening, um, to the mechanical equipment up on the roof. Uh, as well as it allowed us to increase or further define, um, the, the parapet design, um. We also incorporated window awnings, um, or reincorporated, as I, uh, should say, uh, on the ground floor, uh, of the windows along Emmett and, um, Fulton Streets. Uh, as we did that exercise, we also kind of re, re looked at the windows themselves, um, so there's some, some incorporation of some larger windows, especially on the pop outs, uh. Uh, on those facades. Um, we also, uh, reintroduced, uh, brick, uh, as a material. As we did that, we were obviously conscious of introducing, um. Which I think this was one of your comments of too many materials, so there was some balance there, but we really feel like the brick. Uh, has done a good job and will do a good job of complimenting Old Town Emmett, um, street and that corridor. Um, we spent a little time refining the trim details of the building, uh, um, that window detail, um, I think has been expanded, the trim around the windows. Um, as well as incorporated some, some trim details on the, what I'll call the, the main facade with the lap siding that we felt kind of added a little bit more texture and broke up some, some plans. Um. Just in the package, we obviously included some renderings, which I hope was helpful in your review, um, and, uh, further incorporated some details on our, our landscaping plan. Um, which again was, was hopefully helpful. Uh, just quickly, a quick update on where we are, um, you know, what we have been doing over the last month and a half. Um, we are or have, uh, submitted our building permit application to the, the county, um, this week. Um. And, uh, we're on track still to get our final financing approvals here in the next thirty days or so, which will allow us really progress to the closing process and, um, hopefully start construction in, uh. Mid to late summer, so still on track. Um, we're here with any? Questions to answer?
Questions for them? Uh, I'll open this up for.
Yeah. Uh, oh, Rich, where, where do we?
Right, so.
We're gonna be discussing the changes and, and giving. Our approval or that, or what they're presenting tonight.
Okay, so. I'll wait till the discussion.
Okay. Right, I already have like public wants to weigh in. This would be the time to speak up among opening up to public comment. Is anyone requesting on Zoom for public comment?
No.
Then I will bring it back to the commission or discuss them. Ted?
This, again, just to summarize, so my understanding is, um. That the city manager, the city was made aware that there was some significant. Potentially significant changes in facade and otherwise with this, so it was brought back to us. So we've kind of had this list of recommendations. Uh, the developers come back and address those, so now we would be. Going through this list basically and finalizing it, and then we would be done. At this point, it would be, the changes would be approved. Is that what I understand?
Well, I think that, um. What we're dealing with tonight and helping out Lisa is for us to say, you've met the, the requests and we're happy to design. I think everything else is still pending. You know, submit of a lighting plan, signage, right of way permits. Those conditions would span until.
Right, and most of those were not coming to the full planning commission, were they?
So in my understanding is we're just talking about. Whether this design, if we give it a.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Well, my comment then would be, sorry, I, I, I think they've done a very nice job. Responding to our, um, concerns and issues, so I was, had a positive, general, overall impression of what they did.
Rich, did you?
Yeah, I, uh, just wanted to say that. Uh, I do agree that it's an improvement over the, what was presented. Um, however, I'm, personally, I'm still not satisfied with, uh, the overall. Look and design of the building, and I just feel it doesn't. Fit into the neighborhood. Um. Uh, like I expected it, and I'm looking at the, the one we approved a couple of years ago, and. I still find it. A lot more attractive and, um. Uh, maybe it's the balconies, maybe it's the larger overhangs and even the, even the window treatment. Uh, is at the front style glass, um. It just has, uh, just looks like it fits in the neighborhood a little bit better than, than what we're presented now. Uh, another concern I had was, um, and it was also the, the way with the original design. Uh, there doesn't seem to be any stairs access in the north side of the building. There only an elevator there.
So on the north side of the building, yes, for that main entrances are. Just an pedestrian interest, there's an elevator there, and then on both wings. At the ends of both southern wings, there is stair access. Uh, just from design, I think considerations, we feel like that is adequate circulation throughout that, that area. Um, with the elevator and the stairs. Obviously with the parking lot, um, what we find, I think especially in a three story building, um, that, uh. Many of the residents use the stairs, um, and, uh, that is their preference, but the connection, obviously the elevator down to the, the amenity on the ground floors and the pedestrian access is, is sufficient.
And the other question I had was, uh. Uh, is there any overhead bike coverage for the, where the bikes are stored, or is it?
Uh, it will be the west, um, yes, on the west wing, um, uh, outside of the stairwell access, that area is. There is some covered art, bike parking there. But we do find this, um, many folks obviously bring their bikes into their units, um, that's, uh. Especially, um, the quality of bikes that many folks do have now as well, um. So, uh, there is adequate bike parking outside, um, but again, we, we find a lot of folks will bring the bikes that they don't want to be rained on, don't want to be, um, uh. Messed with are, uh, are stored inside.
Okay. That, that's it for me.
So, um. I think you've done a very nice job of absorbing the commentary that we had in the last meeting. Um, and I think that this is a, uh, a, a different design than the first one, but, uh, a, a different approach to the location. And to the, uh. The modern aspects of the building. And how it fits into the neighborhood. I had a preference for the first one too, but I understand the changes here, and I think they've done a good job of incorporating our commentary.
The others. Comments, Rick?
Uh, yes, I'll echo Charlie's comments there in the sense that I think you did a really good job of integrating the things that we had brought up at the last meeting. I still feel that we're kind of on borderline of having almost too many different materials on the overall project, but I understand where you're coming from. And, uh, while I did like the original design with the balconies, I understand. How the project evolved to this point. And I don't think it's inappropriate because. I think while this look, as Charlie said, is different than the previous look. To me, it, it does fit in, in that it kind of has a townhouse sort of a style. As opposed to the balcony and apartment more look that, that the previous one did. And I think it does fit the neighborhood in that it's. Adjacent to the four corners area. Where, you know, those, the four commercial buildings that are on those corners. Have a similar shape and proportion. And facade look, uh, as sections of this facade does. So in that sense, I think it, it is. Textural. And, and does work well. Um, one, maybe minor criticism is just. Because all the parking is on the south end of the building, and I know certainly people that are headed to downtown would go in and out of the north. And, and that's a nice entrance with the, the elevator and the lobby there and all. But from the people that are parking or coming into the two south entrances, I, I think I. Wish that those two little entrance areas were made a little bit nicer, you know, had, had a little bit more of a sense of. Entry as opposed to feeling like you're just coming into the bottom of a stairwell. So I, I don't know if there's a way to address that.
Yes, and I, I will say maybe the, uh, um, maybe we should have included a rendering of that edge and the, the elevation probably doesn't do it as well as what it should, but on, um, the. Uh, west side of the east wing, uh, there, there is a stairwell entrance, but there also is the office. So there will be a bit of, and there's a little bit of commercial kind of storefront at that edge, um, as well with an overhang that wraps the edge. Um, and, uh, then there's actually a conference room, um, that can be used by residents as well, so it'll feel, there will be a very pronounced entrance from the parking lot as well, and. I know from James', uh, perspective, uh, you know, the connection of the office to the parking lot to the, um, uh, to that, the main, um, outdoor courtyard is pretty key and. Um, in the design consideration, so there will be a very kind of pronounced entrance from that side as well.
Good, good, thank you.
Other comments? Um, I agree, I think we're gonna really adapt hearing what we have to say, where it's. Fop and I think it's. That, that slightly industrial layer, but it doesn't, it's not a shock from going from the downtown to see there. In part, it's because some of the materials. So, and, and any more discussion? Right? Someone like to make the motion?
I make a motion then to, uh, approve the facade changes as presented tonight at the meeting.
All right, I'd make the motion. And Carolyn?
Should that motion be said to be more than just side changes?
Well, I think that's all we're in to look at because the rest of it all has to be taken. Uh.
Okay.
You know, it has to be approved other than maybe the landscape.
More question, uh. They're currently under a preliminary site review? Or they, is this a final, is this the final site?
This will be the final.
Final site.
Yes, they got their conditional approval in, on April fifth, and then the commission asked them to come back with any facade changes, so that's.
So does this need to be restructured as a final approval motion?
Um, I don't. The last approval, I believe, was a site plan approval for the amendment. With conditions, not a preliminary.
Right, if, and if I could, I, I think we've been discussing the Maple Blatt property, which had a preliminary site approval. Which we did and then needs a final, so I was thinking about that too, and then it's like. This was approved, but now has changes.
Correct.
Right.
Oh, I would just say that condition eleven has been met.
But then we want to address the, uh, site plan, landscape plan as well as that, because that's new material or, or revised material.
All right, so does anybody have?
And ten?
Right. I would say ten and eleven, or the other ones, I think, were in the last approval were noted as staff, but. Uh, we were, uh, this ten was not. uh we were uh this ten was not really, because it's a higher change.
Right.
Is there any discussion about that, right, at this point?
Well, I think I meant the conditions that we set out, so.
Yeah. If I could, my motion would be better stated honestly to the motion to approve the plan updates as presented of which there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So we have our the plan updates, I could read them all, but we discussed them, they were presented. So that would be a better motion than simply decide changes, because is there a second, would you? Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'm sure I'm can you repeat that time?
My motion would be better stated, I would make to to motion to approve the plan updates as presented tonight and the agenda memo of which we have nine bullet points, which I could read um if you want me to.
All right. Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. The building, the the plan updates that were presenting um was the building footprint had been modified slightly at the southeast and southwest ends of the building. The divided wall in the southeast of the building has been shortened to avoid encroaching on the sidewalk. The divided wall in the southwest end of the building has been removed. Number two is on site parking has been reduced from sixty-three to sixty-two spaces. The six additional on-street parking spaces, the standard requires a total of sixty-eight spaces and is met. Number three was sixteen bike parking spaces are noted at the southwest end of the building and near the dumpster enclosure and twelve spaces are indicated to the west of the courtyard entrance, the standard requires minimum of twenty-eight parking spaces and is met. New access to the green recorder has been removed for uh the next bullet point. Four trees have been added to the southwest side of parking area. The street trees on Fulton Street have been replaced or are providing had been added to either side of the Emmett Street parking lot entrance, and significant landscaping has been identified around the exterior of the building into the courtyard area, the next bullet point was facade changes along Emmett and Fulton Streets. Include the addition of window overhang, stone sills and stone headers. Door overhangs have been added to entrances along the courtyard. The next point is the parapet height has been increased two feet on the bump out portions of the building to help reduce visibility of rooftop, according to the overall height of building increased from thirty-three to thirty-five feet. The standard allows a maximum of thirty-seven feet and is met. And the final point was exterior note materials have been updated. Include that vinyl siding, aluminum woodstone siding, side panel system, veneer brick, vinyl windows in composite trim and fashion.
Can I second that? Okay, that makes the motion, Carolyn seconded, and any more discussion?
Yeah, I just want to point out that I think that sounds great, that motion, but I counted eight bullets, no, did I read it? Not not nine, man, go ahead, Brad, that is as opposed to the eleven items under the condition approval, I'm not sure what's missing one is or the missing ones are, and that that is compared to Andrew's letter, which lists twelve, so did we cover it?
Yes. Okay, just wanted to make sure we got it.
Right, so our approval tonight is on specifically on these changes that were presented. Realizing there's some outstanding items that need to be completed, including the lighting plan and other things.
Okay. Will call folk?
Rapsin?
Yes.
Wilma?
Yes.
Brad, oh, sorry, Buck?
Yes.
Detmer?
Yes.
Next meeting?
Yes.
Maridian?
Reluctantly, yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
I'm gonna go and get. Wow. Good night, John.
We're done. Over tomorrow.
No, I think it's fifty percent out.
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh the planning commission has uh before a two ordinances. Uh one is a ordinance to amend uh the zoning code to that specifies which zoning districts short-term rentals would be located in, and the second ordinance is what is referred to as a police power ordinance, which doesn't require planning commission uh approval, but it is a ordinance that would eventually go directly to the city council for their their review and uh revision or adoption. The or the two ordinances were reviewed, they were brought, they were reviewed initially at the last planning commission meeting, and we decided uh after discussion to create a subcommittee, uh which was the chair, uh Commissioner Newman and Commissioner Wilmot. Uh and Lisa and I and the five of us met a couple of weeks ago, and we reviewed and thoroughly went through and critiqued both of the ordinances. And then there were several other iterations done, but those were done via email uh based on a few uh wordsmithing uh recommendations. We, after the final draft was prepared, uh we sent it over to Matt Cross, who's the city attorney. And Matt took a look at it, and he had a couple other little tweaks. But he said, and you we we attached his email, uh you know, he said, I think this is starting to look pretty good. So uh I think I can speak for the committee, the subcommittee. I think we were kind of all pleased with the result of that process and 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 the result is actually the two ordinances that are uh before the planning commission this evening. As I mentioned, the first one is is a rather short ordinance. This is the one that specifies the zoning districts. Uh the key portion of the key parts of this code is that the short-term rentals would be allowed in the B one, the B two, the B two A mixed-use district, the B three, which is your central business district, and the B three A, which is resort commercials. Uh we also, under the standards, uh short-term rentals shall not be allowed in non-residential uh commercial buildings. And uh short-term rentals shall be located above the first floor of the principal building in those districts. And uh those were the, and then the third was that short-term rentals must meet the provisions of the zoning ordinance and the state building code and the international property maintenance code and fire code, and that the short-term rental shall be required to provide one off-street parking space for an efficiency or one bedroom unit and two parking spaces for two bedrooms or more and shall meet the provisions of the off-street parking and driveway curb cut standards. And these are pretty much the parking standards for residential uses. So that's the zoning ordinance, and I don't know, do you want to go one one at a time? Madam Chair?
I would, but I wonder if it would be advised to just go on first.
We can. The second ordinance that we're going to do first is the police power, which is the, this is the licensing ordinance. This is the one that goes that's that would be adopted as part of the Potaski Court of Ordinances. It goes into way more detail. It's got first section is primarily all definitions, and we made sure that the definitions that are in the licensing agreement are the same ones that are in the zoning definition, so there's no conflict on definitional use. Um the second part is the licensing procedure itself, uh which states that the short-term rental license is between April one and March thirty-one. Uh it we have a procedure of when they the licenses are renewed, and they can commence on somebody that has a license can start the renewal process as early as November first. However, if they do not uh go through the renewal process uh prior to December thirty-one, then their license would be, uh if it's not submitted, it would expire. Uh other provisions in here require uh what the uh application would include and what the uh documents that need to be submitted uh to the city uh for review, and those would include things like the current deed for the property and uh who the ownership is. The way that the ordinance is set up, the ownership uh is in the name of a person. Uh and it's defined is the the definition of a natural person is a human being. Because in corporate law, a a person can be a corporation or a limited partnership. And the ordinance is set up that we do not want limited partnerships or corporations buying multiple pieces of property and licensing them for short-term rentals. So the license has to be in the name of a person. Uh the cap and that's the number of licenses that would be granted in any given year would be established by city council through resolution, so periodically, there could be an annual review, and that cap could increase or decrease, but that's a council decision. Um we do have a provision in the ordinance that currently there are thirty-three, uh let me look at the number here. Uh we have thirty-three, Lisa, or thirty-four?
Thirty.
We have thirty-three, we do have se- several of those properties that are located in residential districts, and they would be grandfathered in as long as their license is maintained. So those are grandfathered. Uh the other licenses would be solely uh available for commercial, in-commercial properties uh above the the first floor. We do have a provision in in here that sets up a waiting list that if somebody applies for an application, but it 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 uh we're already at the cap, they would go onto a waiting list, and that would be kept by city council or by city administration, and when a license becomes available, the first person on the waiting list would have an opportunity, second, third, and so forth. Uh we do have a violation provision in here regarding the first violation is written warning. Second violation could result in a fine. A third violation, uh there's a possibility that the license would be revoked. And if it is revoked, there is an appeal section that goes before the zoning board of appeals, where the person that has the revoke license can basically come and state their case why it should be renewed. But the the short-term license ordinance that is under the police power is really the the meat and bones of the the short-term rental licensing program. The the ordinance, the zoning ordinance uh uh S T R basically defines what districts they can go in, so.
Um yes, um I read this um and uh find it easy to read. Um I think it's thoroughly thorough, although certainly listen to any input for things that could not be there. One question I had, um grandfathering is mentioned, it's on page four, number nine, um it wasn't a definition, and I wondered if it should be, although in that section, it does define what grandfathering is. So I one question for you was, should that be on the definition, or are you happy just defining it in the section number nine?
I I think it's, I don't want to speak for the committee, but I we went through that, we thought it was pretty clear.
Okay.
But.
The other question I have on grandfathering is I'm uh I I guess personally used to um that concept. So in grandfathering these uh existing, they're essentially in my mind a non-conforming use. Um and I was wondering if there would be a provision that when the property was sold, that would go away.
Uh I believe in the licensing. It's in here.
It's number fifteen, page five, it's line two oh six.
Okay, I missed that.
When a licensed property is transferred, the license will expire upon transfer of the property.
And that's for the grandfathered ones as well.
Yeah, that's it, yes.
Any any part.
Well.
Any license part.
In the commercial, it still would happen, but the next one then could apply.
Yeah. I I just wondered in that section, again, I'm back to number nine, that point on page four. The term grandfathering comes in in the middle of the paragraph, so it's a little hard to find it, you know, it's at the end, actually. Um and it's a kind of an important part of this, or just for someone reading this. And then in that section nine, no word does it say when it says in fifteen that that's gonna go, the grandfathering is only gonna exist until such time as um the property is transferred. I wonder if it would, again, that's a I'm just trying to think of someone trying to read this and understand it and really get the picture, because that.
I I certainly don't have a problem creating a definition for what grandfather means in in the in this.
Uh.
If that way, if that provides greater clarity, we can insert a definition of what grandfather means, and then we would refer to it as it's basically grandfather means it's non-conforming relative to the scope of the ordinance.
Yeah, I just wondered for the commission, whatever people think, obviously, but in number nine, if it if we restated that number fifteen, basically the sentence that when the property is transferred, that the grandfathering uh would cease.
Well, the transfer. The transfer applies to all licenses, whether it's grandfathered or not.
Right, but if it was a grandfathered property, you uh you could reapply.
Right, right, because it's not.
Kind of, it's just a kind of a big deal to know.
Very true.
Yeah.
Okay, so what what I understand, Commissioner, is
I know it's clear eventually.
It it's, you wanted to add it into number nine, that a a grandfather parcel property that's transferred, the license will expire. You just want to re, you want to emphasize that.
So when someone's reading that, they get that whole picture right there, not that they remember when they get to number fifteen.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
That was my only.
And if I makes, I think I I I kind of concur is, you know, the point there is that that non-conforming use will no longer be allowed by in in the future, in the future.
Yep. Can do.
Okay, Charlie.
Uh mine is a, uh John is is a process question. Um if we are to consider uh sending this to public hearing at our next meeting, would be these uh doing a public hearing on both of these, or just the policing power with this ordinance being a uh recommendation by resolution to city council directly?
The ordinance that specifies the districts stays at the P C and is subject to public hearing. The licensing ordinance, you would make a recommendation to council, they would be the ones that hold the public hearing.
So the policing power, what we refer to as the long one, the guts of it, is what's going to?
Council.
Oh, council, yes.
Yes, and they they make, they hold a public hearing, because it would be part of the city code of ordinances.
Yeah.
So they hold the public hearing, you hold the public hearing on the on the zoning ordinance that establishes what districts they go in.
Okay. And along with that recommendation to city council for uh the the licensing uh language, uh would we also be making a separate resolution for the number of the cap?
I think the planning commission should make a recommendation to council on what you think the cap should be. It's their policy to establish the cap, but you can provide input.
And and along with that number should be some rationale for why we pick the number, right?
It and I in the, I believe it was in your packet, there was a letter that talked about the rationale for it.
Okay.
Right. Unfortunately, we got that today, so people haven't had a chance to study it, but uh what I'd like to do right now is just focus on the police. Uh what I'd like to do right now is just focus on the police power, Doug.
This is actually related to the amendment, should I wait? Uh I have a question related to the the amendment, should I wait until we're?
The amendment for the zoning?
Yeah.
Or say I saw one police power is the seven page one.
Okay.
And the zoning is the two page one.
Right, so I I did have a question related to the amendment. But you just mentioned the police zoning, so I didn't want to go out of order if you want.
Okay, I guess I'm confused what the amendment is. What do you mean by amendment?
The the zoning.
Okay, we want to get to that.
Okay.
Right now, we're just focusing on the police power. And with this one. Um. We're. This can be our final night looking at this, if we decide it's adequate. Um and it could get passed on to city council at their next meeting. If we feel like things need to be added, you know, and it's a big change, then it would have to stay with us. I believe. So um any other discussion, comments? Ratings of a grandfathered and property transfer explanation in number nine. Um I will tell you that we deleted some sections. We deleted fifteen six exceptions and exemptions. And that was I had to do with a dwelling unit does not need a short term rental license. And that was for family occupancy, house sitting, dwelling sales in a state representative. And we decided that wasn't necessary because we had defined short term rental as a. You know, renting something for thirty days or less. And so we didn't feel that these exemptions needed to be addressed. Since we have the the uh it's thirty days or 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 less and you receive compensation. But I don't know if anybody else has a different opinion on that. And the other thing we um we worked was the maximum occupancy. We had stated it was so many bedrooms per um. So many occupants per bedroom and then so many occupants in addition per floor. We dropped all that and said that the the fire uh. How did we put it, the public safety would determine what the safe occupancy would be. And we also added maximum occupancy, which means not only the occupants, but their deaths. Um one of the things we want to avoid is a large event taking place in an S T R. And of course, you know, I mean houses. They can't always, if you have a lot of people there, they're not gonna be able, the bathrooms can't support and and all that, so we added those things. And we also added uh for a bedroom uh. Uh definition, we said a bedroom has to include a second egress opening. Which should be obvious for fire code, but we state it very clearly in the ordinance. Including what basements need to be if they're included. So does anybody feel that we, oh, the other thing we we uh deleted was the the complainant requirements. Um you know, if a complainant files a false report, it it said how they would get a hold of things, but. We also decided this was for the licensee. And um that we are including, uh Charlie suggested this, and I think it was uh. A good addition that in their rental um document. You know, the lease has to include some city ordinance information, so you know, our fireworks, trash. Police noise, that's right in, they have to include that in their lease language. So that helps the the renter understand. So that was also added. And I think the logic was when we are besides, it didn't seem appropriate in this document. Is that because there's city ordinances, it would be handled just like any other complaint. My only question, John, is that if somebody makes a complaint. And the police show up and address it and just talk to the people and leave. Uh or the local agent addresses it, when does it become an infraction?
When it makes its when it makes its way to city hall. So if uh uh if a a a resident, a neighbor filed a complaint. And the enforcement officer went out and confirmed it. Or if public safety was called for for noise, or if that if that complaint. Or that infraction was then uh made its way to the uh zoning administrator and the enforcement officer. Then that would be the first infraction and they would they would receive a written notice.
Okay. So it would really be up to the police whether they filed something or just gave them a had a conversation.
So I guess I was unclear with that explanation. If if an officer goes out, but there's no citation.
For for example, if an officer went out, neighborhood, a neighbor complained that somebody was parking in front of their house in the street. And the officer went out and said, hey, you know, move your car, to me, that's that that's not a big deal. But if if somebody had a band or had a stereo system and they were playing loud music until one o'clock in the morning and. The neighbors called and the public safety went out. I would expect that public safety then would notify zoning administrator and the code enforcement officer. And then that would be a the the licensee would receive a written warning saying, don't do that again. So there there's a little bit of. You know, discretion that's applied on the degree.
So is there anything else? That anybody believes needs to be added? Okay. Are we ready to make a recommendation to city council as is?
What would be proposed regulations?
Right. I did have one other question when they say how the um. Uh. The application can be received. Uh it mentions U S mail or handing in in person. So fax, email, or. Is there any reason why that couldn't be done?
Sometimes because of the uh there may be issues regarding the uh. The timestamp. For example, if somebody emails it in after five o'clock when city hall is closed or. The end dates are Friday and they email it on Saturday. They could say, well, I sent my email, city hall was closed, it should still be considered. This has kind of been debated in a lot of communities I've worked in. And they've said, look, you got two options, you can hand deliver it or you send it by mail, because the mail's got a timestamp on it.
Okay, so what about FedEx?
FedEx, fine.
Okay, well, I figured it was a person that would hand it off to somebody, so, all right. All right, is somebody ready to make a motion?
I I just have a question, do they not the same thing that the ordinance changes, when we make those changes, it goes to the public hearing?
With us, yes.
Right, so do we wait until we truly approve that before we send the leasing to city council?
I I think they. Oh. Well, I leave, I turn to John.
Okay, I I I would recommend that we 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 act on these separately. Uh we need to, I think you we need to get something in front of city council, so we have some rules and regulations. Um and I'm sure that when it gets to them, they may have some changes, but those changes will be between them and the city attorney. And you know, myself or the city manager at that point in time. But I I think we gotta, we 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 have to divide these and just get them moving in the right direction.
Right, and you've pointed out that there currently are short term rentals in town.
Yes.
So this would apply.
Yes.
So short of us passing. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Charlie.
Should the motion be made in the form of just a recommendation or a resolution or what 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 process should be?
I've got. I I have in my cover letter.
Okay.
I have a proposed motion for these ordinance to amend the city for your consideration.
Right. Uh before we do that, I I'll open up to the public, if the public would like to comment. And state your name and address.
My name is Christopher Terry. I'm from Harper Spring. Oh, I actually own four of the thirty three year old. Short term rental license, uh we own business in the. I heard called Little Bay Cottage. Um my only concern, we are an actual business in the business district. Um would be the same provision you've outlined and stuff with regards to the transfer. My concern would be this, um if we were to sell the our business, our property. Unfortunately, much like if you were to buy a restaurant and expect to have a liquor license go with that, you wouldn't buy a restaurant unless you had a liquor license. The reality would be, if you buy a rental, knowing you can be put to the back of the line. And therefore possibly miss out on the actual business that you were looking to buy. So that would be my concern about the same provision, which would be uh fifteen when the property license is transferred. Because we're not grandfathering our business, hopefully in the central district will remain. Uh having the ability to to be a short term rental, the concern is if we ever want to sell that business, the new owner would eventually. Essentially, or could be put to the end of the line.
May I? Yes, I'll I'll give you my answer uh is that. In I try to make the distinction that a short term rental is a license, it's not an asset. And a a piece of property that's used as a short term rental, it's it's primary use is residential. Uh not a short term rental. Uh so when the property transfers or is sold. Then it's it's sold with the intention that it's going to be a residential unit, because it's actually nonconforming in the residential district.
It's not residential, it's in the business district.
Oh.
In the central business district, it's in B two, it is. It's a commercial building.
Which which the.
For Little Bay Cottage, it's right there on block.
Oh, yeah, that that one we've discussed.
Okay.
Yeah, that one we consider in the business district.
But the concern is under the ordinance is that the is that the license will not transfer with it, so therefore we have been told. Forgive me if I'm wrong, so we have been told that unfortunately any potential owner would then be put to the back of the line. And that unfortunately would make, unless we were owners, you plan, you know, the city, we live here, but the reality is. Is that unless we continue to maintain the ownership and we will have, it'll be there every first of November, don't worry, but at the same time.
Lisa, refresh my memory, we did talk about, that's the one on Waukesha.
Yeah, correct.
And I I think our our interpretation of that was was that that could be sold as a short term rental, because. Hotels and motels technically are allowed in that district with special approval.
It is a lot, it is a permitted.
Permitted use, so you you kind of have an exception. On the on the Waukesha one because of the location in the C B D.
Would we need to? Make an application at the hotel, I mean, we are.
No, no, we don't want to do that, but we this is an unusual circumstance.
It it is.
You know, you've got four units, it's in the business district, Waukesha, and we know that it's short term rentals. And it's just, that's quirky, quirky. What we're really getting at in terms of the grandfather are the units that are in residential zone districts.
Unfortunately, whatever, of course, I agree with you.
Sure.
The language doesn't, the language says that if we transfer it from Kristen Martin Carey to John Smith. The John Smith will no longer have a license, and the concern I have of the ordinance is that John Smith will be put to the end of.
No, you're not, in that interpretation, you are correct. They will be, the way the way this is set up is that when you sell it to another party. That license does not transfer. That that person buys the property, they if the if they're if the cap is available or under the cap. They can apply for the license, if they apply for the license and it's at the cap, then they go onto the waiting list. So you you read it correctly.
And that's my concern, I guess, about if I need to go on a restaurant, you have a liquor license, and I understand it's not. You say equivalent, but you wouldn't be able to sell your license if you didn't have, you wouldn't be able to sell your restaurant if you couldn't guarantee the owner. The ability to serve alcohol and beverages under the license you currently have.
Correct.
Where in many cases, liquor licenses are transferable, I guess what I'm saying is that that is our concern about this, is that it's not transferable. I mean, if you're saying that that's not gonna be the case, well, I guess I'm just trying to clear that up, there's a potential.
I'm saying that you you can you can sell it under the pretense that it's a short term rental. The person you're selling it to has to understand that if there are licenses available, they can apply. If there are licenses available, they can apply and go on the waiting list. Well, just a question, but since it's an existing. Short term rental licensed, it's one of those however many licenses that were approved by, that would be approved by city council. And it will already be licensed, so isn't when there couldn't there be a mechanism that will allow? Nonconforming. Well, in in. Parties to just. Maintain that license. In his case, based on how this is set up, what's that?
He said.
I'm sorry, conforming, yeah, conforming.
But I I'll remind you of the discussion, we are allowing short term rentals on the second story of commercial buildings. And you have short term rentals on the main floor.
You have only one floor, so.
Oh, it's only.
That's gonna be something that when you get to the next ordinance, we're gonna have to ask for interference, I guess, at some point in time, because we only have one floor, so I mean. The second floor is one unit, right, I'm sorry.
So you have one unit up and two units down.
Three units down, one year ago.
Okay. So.
It's a unique, it's a unique piece of property, and I I'm sorry to bring out our personal concerns, but personally.
Right.
Um but the the concern is that it comes up to be a unique building and it's smacked out in the business district.
Mm hmm.
We like being good stewards of the city of Kuytowski, we hope we're, we hope we're helping, I know for term rentals sometimes get a bad. Uh rap, but the reality is we hope we're helping great business for the city, and at the same time. I don't know if we're gonna want to stay with it forever, so to speak, and the concern is is that if I can't, I can't promise somebody a license, then. It becomes potentially unsellable, other than the value of the property itself, but. Then you get into what would somebody else do with that piece of property? That's our answer.
Well, it has four permits, right?
It's obviously correct.
Yeah, so it can be sold as a rental property.
Which diminishes the value significantly, so I I know that's not your problem, and I guess I'm just, I'm I'm bringing that up for public comment, I'm glad you're.
Okay.
I just want to say, I I think it's an interesting point, and my perspective is what what are we trying to do with this ordinance and. Um define districts where these properties can go. Um keeping them out of residential areas um and then potentially setting a cap on the number in the city uh is the other discussion. In addition to having better requirements and all the things that go along with doing this, so. I personally don't have a huge interest in taking one away that's in a district that's fine if just because it gets sold, I I. Somewhat agree with that point, actually, I don't. I mean, people. I don't, you know, that wasn't on my radar for things I wanted to achieve in this ordinance, it's all the other things.
Well, the the problem is what's best in the commercial space. Um and we've had this discussion about allowing living space on the first floor.
Mm hmm.
And our commercial space, we want the first floor to be commercial. So therefore, that's one reason why we said they can be on the second story up. They can't be on the first story. So this house is is just doesn't. What is it, a square peg trying to fit into a round hole, it's the exception, but it's the only one. And.
I I can argue that because there are other buildings on that street that were houses that were converted to offices, but could be converted back to condos.
Mm hmm.
So you know, there's that one, and then there's another one across the street on Mitchell, and then there's top line. There's a couple more in there, so.
Inverting to rental is one thing. Inverting to short term rentals, another.
Right, right.
And that's what we're trying to go on.
Any other?
Not on the first floor, they couldn't.
But you can argue that it's not a commercial building, the residential building, so there's also. I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm not quite sure.
Is is there any way to structure of of variance for this particular property?
No, I think you're gonna have to talk to the city attorney about how he would want to craft the the ordinance or that provision. Bottom line is, we don't want to set a precedent. And allow short term rentals on the first floor in a business district. Because what's gonna happen then is that any business, any commercial property on Mitchell or any of the other commercial streets could be sold for short term rentals. Hmm. Commercial streets could be sold for short term rentals, and then you're, you're giving up your retail space. So you gotta be very careful with this. This is, the Waukesha is, is a unique one. But, you know, my, my, I guess my position is, I understand it's a short term rental, I understand it's an income producing property. For, for this couple, but the bottom line is, it's, it's actually an apartment house. That is in, that happens to be in the business district.
Good question.
It wasn't, wasn't built as a short term rental, it was converted into a short term rental. It was, it was actually at some point a residential home.
Right, so your point is that resi- residential homes used to exist in the central business district.
Well, yeah, sure.
But if they sell, other than possibly. Getting sent to the end of the line, they would still be able to have a short term rental on the first floor of that specific.
No. That's non-conforming.
I mean, we have.
So they would only have one short term rental in there.
Yeah, they could use the other three for, for an apartment, for rental, like a typical rental, then the one up on the second floor can be a.
Should we push the green button later?
Could I please make a comment? I'm Martin Carey. Uh, co-owner of four one four Waukesha Little Bay Cottage. Another thing that I think might be helpful to be pointed out with this. Is that of our four apartments, the largest one is five hundred and ninety-five square feet. The second largest is four hundred and forty square, uh, four hundred and sixty. Four hundred and forty square feet, and then three hundred and fifty square feet. These are small places where I would argue. Are not suitable necessarily. For long term renting, we're not. They're vacation spots. They were not divided that way, we bought, we bought the building in that, in that way. The previous owner had long term renters pursuant to a mischelone they received to rehabilitate the property. And it was a mess with one person living in three hundred and fifty square feet. It was a mess, we have no private parking of our own. So perhaps there's. A square footage requirement, I don't know what the city ordinance is for square footage requirements for, for long term dwelling spaces. And if that's something that can be considered here.
My recommendation to the planning commission is. My recommendation to the planning commission is move it on to the council. And then in between, when it's in between planning commission and council. I'll have a conversation with the city attorney about how he, he feels. We should craft it regarding this situation. But I don't want to, I don't want to. Create a situation where we establish a precedent, which then opens up the rest of the business districts for short term rental. I just recommend that we don't do that.
Well, and that's short term rental on the first floor.
So this is unique, but then I would like to talk to Matt about it, in, in terms of what his, what his, uh. Uh, what, how he would. Envision.
Right.
Kind of resolve this.
I would also say that for the first floor. There, you have a central business district.
Correct.
So we don't allow residential on the first floor. So I wonder, even if that was allowed to go back to long term rental. How, it, it, I know it's unique and it.
Well, it's a non-conforming use.
Right, so how do we, we can't, once, how does that work if, uh. If that were to be sold, then just the non-conforming use, it stays with the property? Or if it's sold, it's no longer that?
Well, you've got two different issues going on, you've got. A house that's in the CBD. That it can still be sold and still be non-conforming. But in their, their case, they've overlaid a short term rental on top of it, which the ordinance says, the short term rental ordinance says, if they sell it, the license. Expires, and then the new person has to either use an existing one on their cap. Or go on the waiting list. So you've got two different things going. You've got a non-conformity, you've got a residence in the business district, which is non-conforming. And then you've got a short term rental on top of it. That's why I need to talk to the city attorney about how he wants to craft it.
I just feel if we send it on, for my part, I would like it. To somehow state that I, I understand and hear this issue and. I would like to find a way to potentially, if possible, make it work. I, I think. It is a house in the CBD, they didn't make this thing, they didn't rip down a commercial building. And put a house there at short term rentals, it's part of the fabric of Petoskey. I totally agree that first floor, um, commercial is what we want in the CBD. Although people have argued about, you know, stores that sell things versus. Um, commercial entities that are more businesses and don't have a sidewalk appeal, if you will. So this wouldn't have sidewalk appeal for shoppers, it's on the end. But it certainly has people using the CBD, so it's kind of a neat thing to have in that respect, so, I don't know. I just hope that we pass it on to.
Pass it on to Matt, but I also want to pass along the, the issue of the, of the transfer of the license we. You can't get into a position where we craft an ordinance specifically to allow them, them only. Be able to, to put the property up for sale as a short term rental and say, oh, by the way. The license comes with it, or the other people that are licensed have to fall under the ordinance that if they sell the property. That license expires, and then they've got to go on the waiting list. And it's, the other part of it is. We don't know what that cap is yet, and we don't know really how many short term rentals are out there. We know that there's thirty-three, but my bet is that there's more than what we think. Is that it's not going to be fair to the people on the waiting list. If somebody that owns a short term rental can sell it as a short term rental, because then they're never going to have the ability or the opportunity. To, you know, use, to, to, to get a license. So we're kind of, in a way. Uh, kind of creating a monopoly in a way, by, that's the whole purpose of, when you transfer. When you sell a property that's an STR. The people can buy it as STR, but they have to apply, and if there's no licenses available, then their license goes into the waiting list.
Well, a couple of things, I think the most likely scenario is often these things would be on for some period of time.
Correct.
And, um, another thing is they certainly wouldn't make an exception for these people. But if this situation could be legally adequately defined in a narrow way, that's what my interest is.
And that's what I'll discuss with the city attorney. Because I think we've got two issues here. We've got a house in the business district which is not conforming. And then when, then it's being used as a short term rental, and their position is, when they get ready to sell, they would like to sell it as a short term rental and have the license. Uh, be transferred over to the new owner, which is inconsistent with how the ordinance is set up.
Right.
And that kind of sets then a precedent for other people going, well, why do I have to give up, why can't I sell my property as a short term rental? The, 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 the strategy here is to put a cap on STRs. So it reduces the amount of speculation that goes on in a community where people are coming in and just buying houses. With the intent of trying to get a short term rental license. And they're taking houses off the market that could be used either as long term rentals or as. Uh, owner property, that's part of a housing dilemma. That many communities are facing with, with this competition with the STRs. Is that there's not enough supply, and there's this artificial demand going on. That's being caused by the number of short term rentals that are being converted. And right now in Petoskey, we only own thirty-three. We'll know of more. You know, that's about one, maybe two percent of your housing stock. But in the analysis that we did, a lot of communities are already at five and six percent of their housing stock is being used for short term rentals.
But you're, you're. You're right, there's a lot of residential homes that people are using their short term rentals. Let's face it, illegally or to use a better term. Uh, this is, this is not that situation, and nor is anything in the business district that situation. You're right. People buying a home, y- you know, uh, uh, up, up on, uh, whatever, Petoskey Street. Uh, not in the business district, shouldn't be using their home as a short term rental. I, we would not have done that. But it's, it's, it's where we're located, I think that's just what the uniqueness about. And I appreciate you wanting to talk to the, to the city attorney about it, I, I'm, I'm. The concern is, again, and the same goes back to the second ordinance while we're talking about it, is the first floor, which of course I, probably come up again and talk to you again about, but. Um, where we find ourselves to be a unique piece of property. I, I, I guess that would be my only.
The, that, the second issue that you brought up about first floor. That to me is something that could be resolved at the zoning board of appeals. Because you have an existing home that was built with first floor residents. And it, it, it happens to be non-conforming. And even if you use it as a long term rental, it wouldn't be consistent with the, with the city code. So there, there has to be some. Uh, uh. Leeway there, relativity, that's the reason for, I could see that part going to the zoning board for variance. Just based on the historic context of the building in the downtown. So that one, I think, is resolvable.
John, going back to the first issue. Um, is there any merit to considering? Uh, terminating the license for anything that's in a non-conforming district? But allowing renewal of the license as a priority. For, uh, after a sale of a property in the conforming district.
So, yeah, anything, anything in commercial districts that's above the first floor. Allow that to happen.
A lot, well. I mean, there may, there should be parameters to it, but. You're not a total ban like in the residential.
Right. Uh, if, if I owned a bus, a downtown building, that commercial building, that had a short term rental on the second or third floor.
Right.
Okay.
Exactly.
And then I sold the building. Hey, those short term rental licenses would be, they would expire, and the people buying the building would have to reapply.
So at the end of the line.
Yes.
Because it's a conforming use and a existing.
But I know. But if we, we establish a priority system.
Right.
Then, again, that's very discretionary and. It's like, the, the, it's, it would, it's, would be unfair to the people that are on the waiting list. That they keep, keep, keep getting pushed down because of that issue.
They, they don't have the opportunity because the license already exists and, and it's in somebody else's name, so.
I guess, I would say, who's hiring more? There's someone on the waiting list who would like to get into the short term rental business, and they're hoping to do it. They're sitting there waiting, they're, maybe they're renting it out long term, or someone who has. You know, an existing use like that, when, has a property with some value and they like to sell it that way. I just. For me, it doesn't bother me, I don't care who owns, I, I like the cap. And I like, um, not allowing grandfathering at sales in residential neighborhoods, that's my main.
Well, first floor commercial.
In general, for the CBD, yes, although this is an interesting example.
The minority exists, if the continued owners continue to reapply, the waiting list never gets filled, so.
Now, I'm hearing the planning commu- uh, I can, hopefully I'm hearing what you're saying. Is that if you own a commercial property with a short term rental on the second or third floor. You can sell that building with the idea that the, the short term rental license will transfer to the new property owner, is that what you were talking about?
Well, it would be given priority, they wouldn't have to go to the bottom of the list, let's put it that way. When, when the renewals happen on an annual basis. Because one of those properties had already been licensed like that, they would. Automatically be licensed if they, if the new owner met all the criteria. Of, of the re-application, the annual reapplication. I, I think that's.
All right, I'd like to add another scenario, if, because people who own buildings rent the space. So say someone rents the upper story and turns them into short term rentals. And. They have a, a, you know, a lease, a long term lease, and the owner of the building sells the building. Does that renter lose the short term rental license?
Yeah, that, that, sounds like. Let me, let me say this. I've been with communities that have taken five years to do a short term rental license, and the reason being is. Like this gentleman, everyone that owns a short term rental is going to have a different scenario that they're going to allow you to incorporate in the ordinance. You, you have to make an ordinance that is pretty much uniform across the line. Right? Uh. When, when I bought it, when I buy a car. And I have a driver's license. If I sell that car to my daughter, my driver's license doesn't go to her, she's got to get her own license. And that's the same thing with a short term rental. It's a license, it's not, it's not part of the asset of the property. It's, it's a license to use the property for a short term rental for that year unless that application's renewed. All right, once you start making different, uh, exceptions. We're, we're never, we're, this, I can tell you that the city's never going to have a short term rental ordinance, and there's no way. We're going to be able to manage this at the community level.
So you're saying there's no possibility that the ordinance would simply say that in conforming districts. The license can transfer. With this.
But I think it could be, you know, you have to apply for that same, um. Application for, within thirty days of the sale of it.
Right.
And then if you don't apply, then you get picked up again.
Right. You could do that, couldn't you? I mean, if, if we wanted.
I want to talk to the attorney, because if, if, if we, I, my, my concern is, if we. Allow that in the commercial district. Then what's a person in the residential district that has a grandfathered property? I can see them saying, wait a minute, if you're doing it for commercial property. I should be able to sell my short term rental house and have thirty days to re, have the person renew their license. I'm just concerned, and that's why I want to talk to the.
Well, yeah, I asked the question, it just seemed that conforming, non-conforming are two different situations that can be defined.
Yes, it is. To a, to a property owner that has a short term rental in a residential district, maybe not so much, so. I, I just, I want to explore, I'd like to explore this situation with the attorney within the context of the ordinance.
If I could just add just one thing, I, I think the point was made in the, in the public comments, but. If you can't transfer that license, does that discourage the investment that the current owner has into that property? So would there be higher quality units in terms of the capital that's put into these, uh. Uh, this, these units that would otherwise maybe not be utilized because they're upstairs. And, and so, um, by, by not being able to transfer the license, you certainly are discouraging. The current owner from putting, um, additional funds or the minimum amount of funds into that, into that property because of the investment horizon.
I would respond to that by saying in the residential districts.
We're not talking about that.
Here, we're not, just.
Well, there is a, you're, you're absolutely right, there's a fundamental difference that, that I think we're debating here. Between the residential districts grandfathered and the commercial districts. Not just the grandfathered ones, but the ones that are conforming use licenses as well. So, uh, I, I, I think if John talks to the city attorney. Um, and he'll get a thorough review and. I would urge us to nevertheless move this ordinance forward to the city council. Uh, in the interest of, uh, getting something done, uh, to protect the city from. Uh, an influx of short term rentals, and which already may be happening as we begin to do more investigations.
Well, I will say that the grandfather ones are properly licensed. And we know about them. So any for short term rental that is not licensed will not be able to. Continue. Only the ones that are practically licensed now.
But this pending ordinance really helps reinforce that and put some teeth into it for a future enforcement officer, that, that it would be very difficult to enforce.
Yes. I agree with John that, um, that we need to be very careful and that. Uh. Allowing living space. I don't know how quite out of with this, to be with short term rentals. The ability to make money, um, is very attractive, but it also means that we don't. There's a higher priority for short term rentals than there are for, uh, workforce housing, and we don't want that to compete. So I, I do see the value of, um. Not transferring, uh. In other words, you can have short term rentals, but it, it, uh. The incentive shouldn't be that you create it and then you sell it for, as a moneymaker. Because that just raises the prices of all real estate. When you do that. So, um.
Madam Chair, just so I, I'm very clear when I talk to Matt, you want me to talk about the Waukesha. Madam Chair, just so I, I'm very clear when I talk to Matt, you want me to talk about the Waukesha Zoo? Issue. And then you want me to ask, talk to Matt about. Help me if I'm wrong, that if there is a conforming property, property in a commercial district. That meets all the standards and that property be sold. So now, one is, can the license be transferred with the sale, or two, can the license be? They go on, they go into the waiting list, but they go into a priority status. Is that what I was hearing? I don't wanna misrepresent what the planning commission wants me to talk to the, the attorney about.
What I heard was that uh prior to closing. Uh, and the, uh, the termination of the license, that the property owner be given thirty days. For the new property owner to apply and qualify for transfer of the license. I think that's the cleanest way.
Okay.
And, and, and with no effect on the waiting list at all. Not the front of the line, not the back of the line, no waiting list at all.
Okay.
So are you, are you saying we don't have a waiting list then?
For properties that become available in conforming districts.
If they don't, um, with the transfer within thirty days, they have to have a bottom weight like.
Yeah, and, and, and just so you know, the, the property in Waukesha Zoo is not considered grandfather. That's, that's not one of the grandfather. It's, it's not on the grandfather was reporting to the city and.
But they're in central business district, they're exempt from parking. So they would be exempt from the parking.
Okay, got the two questions, I'll, I'll address them with Matt.
All right, so. Shall we um? Uh, proceed with the proposed motion for the uh city code for police power?
I'd be happy to make a mark. Is it? Um, motion to recommend that city council consider the proposed short term rental ordinance for adoption. That establishes the licensing, occupancy, waitlist, and enforcement provisions affecting the use of property for short term rentals in the city of Potaski. Along with an accompanying explanation from the planner and the uh, and the city attorney regarding. Uh, possible alternatives.
Okay, and there were a couple proposed revisions.
Yes, for number nine.
A definite, the addition of a definition.
And the addition of that, and the addition of the definition of grandfather. And uh appropriate language changes in.
Yeah, stating that the license when grandfathered property, they lose the license when grandfathered property is transferred. There's no renewal of the license. No future.
I need clarity on the middle part of what I'm, what I'm voting on, in terms of the. Am I voting on what is written here in front of me with the addition of the grandfather language?
The grandfather definition, I'm sorry, the grandfather definition. Uh, the uh, language that was um added to section nine to further clarify grandfathering situations. And uh, the fact that the uh planner and the city attorney. Will be, will look at certain key object, uh, alternatives for the commercial district.
Let me summarize the four actions. Action number one in the motion. Would be the, insert the definition of grandfather. Uh, modify on page four, section nine. That when a license of a grandfathered property transfers, the license shall expire with the transfer. And then the two, two, two uh. Items for the attorney, one, uh, unconforming properties and the transfer with sale. And the licenses within thirty days, uh, if they're a- applied within thirty days. Can they uh transfer with the property or they expire? And then the fourth issue is the particular issue that we have with Waukesha Zoo. Those are the four, four items.
Meaning first bar.
Uh, yes.
And so, and if, again, I'm sorry for clarity, so voting in favor of this is in support of the transferability. Of a conforming license.
No.
With some, with some.
Thirty day, we're picking it to the city council.
Your, uh, commissioner, what you're, what you're gonna prove, uh, what you're passing is. The current ordinance as it's in front of you with the four, with the two changes, grandfather definition, changing section nine on page four. Those are the two uh contextual changes. Number three is, and four are issues that I'll bring before the attorney, that'll make their way to the city council. And that's the Waukesha Zoo first floor and conforming properties that sell. That if the apple, if the, if the seller, if the buyer within thirty days applies for a license. It can transfer, if they don't within thirty days, the license, the license would expire. And I'll get with the attorney on how to craft that appropriate language.
I guess I'd just like to, and, and maybe we're saying the same thing. I'm not sure there's consensus that if, if that language was acceptable of all, acceptable to an attorney. And to be incorporated here into this document, I'm not sure there's necessary consensus on the commission in support of that. And I would just hate, or I, I don't want the city council to infer. Because we're asking this point if it's even possible that, that there's a general consensus for that.
Well, if, if that is part of the commissioner's motion. About the transfer of conforming, the conforming property sells. The buyer has thirty days to apply for a license or the license expires. If that's part of the motion. Then, when, when the, when the, when the commission takes the vote, you'll make that decision if there's consensus or not.
Well, and furthermore, this is uh, uh, this is, we're not doing a public hearing on this one.
Council.
Council's going to do a public hearing on this, so all we're doing is giving them more information on this, on this question. Because ultimately, they're gonna decide the entirety of this document, of this ordinance. Uh, regardless of what our recommendation is.
Um, I would like to say that. Uh, if my vote yes is that I'm for the transfer.
I was just, madam chairman, I was just gonna say, to make it clean, what isn't the planning commission? Do a consensus vote up or down, if you're comfortable with the idea that if a conforming property sells. That the buyer within thirty days has the opportunity to apply for a license. And if they don't, then it expires. Okay, so I mean, if, if you vote, if you do a consensus vote on that, then I can tell the attorney. That would be the, that would be the, the, the consensus of the planning commission to create that type of language.
I would have to say, I would hate to vote on that particular point without an attorney opinion. Because I can feel, one way now that I'm kind of inclined to allow that. Um, attorney could say it's a no brainer, it's fine, he could say you can put that in. But there's a chance that could be challenged and it could undermine, which case I might vote differently. You've suggested a conservative approach to not muddying the waters, so I feel like I need the opinion on that.
I don't disagree with that, what if we were to send this on with the caveat that we want to explore? That.
This issue with the attorney would go directly to council.
Right, right, yeah.
And so, with all due respect to your idea of consensus, it doesn't really matter, when we vote on advancing it to council, that's your consensus. If they have an objection to my motion as stated, they'll vote against it.
That's it there too.
Well, couldn't we do just a consensus vote on that piece of it?
So you can't, I mean, what you're, what you're, all you're doing is telling me to get with the attorney. On the conforming property transfer option.
Right.
I don't know how, how he's gonna opine on that. You're just telling me to get with him on that, and if he thinks it's doable, then it'll get inserted in the ordinance when it gets to the city council. If he feels it's not doable, then it won't show up in the ordinance.
Well, I would like it to be presented as what is in the best interest for the city. In making this decision. So.
Presumably Cynthia, that's the main consideration of the city council.
Right.
At this point, we need to present draft language. Then this one is no longer in our camp, okay, we need to move on to this.
Yeah, I agree.
This one is, the, the next one is the one we need to hold the public hearing on and live or die on that mountain as we get there.
Okay.
So are we waiting for a second?
Uh, we had a first.
I will second your motion.
Okay.
I will second Charlie's motion.
All right, so Bettany made the second, Charlie made the motion. And we'll call vote.
A discussion?
Oh, discussion.
Just had a question, so in line with what some of the other people have said, um. So if, it, I, I'm in favor of this going to the city council in this regard, basically what we're planning on doing. I just, you, you said you would just insert it, and I was thinking where it would be. The planning commissioners asked this question, the city attorney has, so council would get. Basically, what we have with the two corrections we talked about are changes in nine. And then they would get a separate paragraph stating that this issue came up, some commissioners. You know, we, we didn't have a big opinion, so I'm not gonna put it there, so someone could just pick it up and say, well, they. Be confused about what they did, so you guys should decide now, based on a legal opinion, further public comment. The best interest of the city, what, what you should do, just so it's really clear that we didn't. That's how, does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's my, I, I guess I would be. I, I'd be concerned if, if after consulting uh city council, uh, or, I'm sorry, the city attorney. That language that I, I hadn't reviewed was inserted into, and, and took into this document. I'd like, I would prefer that to be removed. Move from the, the changes of this documents and then just add as additional consideration. You know, city council may wanna consider that, that aspect.
The whole aspect that we're moving on to city council is, is kind of at their discretion. All the way around, I mean, they could change anything in there.
But I think just in the presentation, I think the concern is that it's very exceedingly clear, we have one council member here, but. It's exceedingly clear what we have before us and what we were talking about more theoretically. That's what's woven in, just so it's clear.
Yeah, I got that approach.
So, I'm, Charlie.
Motion.
Are you, do we put a second motion on the, so proceeds, are you, would you be willing to? Drop that and then we do a second motion with that recommendation?
I, I, I request.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty clear on what, what the direction of the planning commission is.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Bradock?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Detmer?
Yes.
McSweeney?
Yes.
Maridian?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Roma?
Yes.
All right, police power is. We're done, now we move to the. We move on to the zoning language, which is two pages, um. I, I, the major change we did here was the number four short term rental. Um, talking about area requirements for bedrooms. You know, the dwelling estimate exceeds six hundred square feet, two hundred feet, we deleted that. Um. Just building codes have minimum requirements and, you know, we're. So I think that's spelled out, we don't need to spell it out in the script. Zoning ordinance, so it's really just, the zoning ordinance is about the. Uh, districts that we're allowing it in and then. Stands for short term rentals, where they're allowed, you know, non-resident to commercial buildings, not on the first story. But they have to meet all zoning ordinance and state codes and property maintenance. And then finally, a short term rental shall be required for off street parking. So those are the sections of the zoning ordinance. Anybody have any questions? Carolyn?
I just have a question about our list of the zoning districts. Uh, the B two A, is that called transitional business or mixed use corridor?
I believe the, B two A is called the mixed use corridor, is it Lisa?
I believe it's transition.
Transitional business district, and then. Is, are we not doing, I guess I'll take the, um, D. As B here is general business district. And then are we not including the B two B, the mixed use corridor?
I don't have my zoning ordinance book, I forgot. So do, does anybody have the zoning, oh, you've got it, all right. Oh, thank you.
Well, I think our discussion was that there was a lot of residential in the B two B. That was why it wasn't included, but it could be misremembered.
Correct.
Yeah.
The reason why the B two B, because of the amount of residential properties in that district.
You're saying in the B two B, wasn't that all of? Along Emma Street right there?
It goes from.
I guess I don't have a map, I'm gonna be sorry.
Goes along Emma Street.
Can we get the map up on the screen if that possible? All right. I can't really see it on this map.
Starting on the north end of that, it's the um, the, the bank on the left side of the green strip. And the dry cleaners, and then on the right hand side. Which was the news review, which now also would be, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll step me down from there, so we'll stop this. For your residential small house right there where the cursor was. And then the big tall brick building.
Does it build? And then it goes into houses.
Yeah, I guess there's, I guess there's very few single family houses that would be affected by.
Well, their second floor number one says it can only be allowed in non-residential buildings.
Yeah.
So, that's your, that's your safeguard.
Well, that, no, it can only be on the second story.
So what's that, is that called the mixed use district?
And the, yeah, B two B.
Mixed use.
Mixed use corridor. And B two A is transitional and B three is general business or your CBD? I will guarantee you in the new zoning code, we'll be changing these names.
Say it again?
That was it for my question.
Okay. Yeah, the discussion. All right. Would the public like to weigh in?
State your name again.
Christopher Terry again, I'm sorry, and, and I'll restate four on four Waukesha Zoo. Um, I, I don't wanna restate the first floor, but it sounds like that would be something that we could hopefully. Ask for a variance at that point in time, considering the nature of the building, but. Overall, that would, I think, I think we might be the only building that qualifies under. overall, that would, I think, I think we might be the only building that qualifies under that type of situation, so, thank you.
John, uh, would that building be eliminated because of number one, intersection four?
Too, well, it's it's non-conforming. I mean, it's, I hate to use the term, it's grandfathered, but it's it's non-conforming because it's 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 been in the district.
So it would fall into the same category before the zoning board of, yes.
And the question now, if we're going down in front of the GBA, what would we, there are like the
Right.
Well, their hardship would be, and you know, I, uh, would be that it's a historical building. It probably predates the zoning code. And what's
Without a doubt.
Without a doubt, yeah, and it, and and the, uh, even if it was used as a single-family residence. Uh, it, it it still would be non-conforming because it's in the the business district, so that, that's part of the hardship, it's that, it's an, it's an existing historical building that was you know, established prior to the zoning code, and it currently doesn't meet any of the zoning standards. So in order to bring it into somewhat of conformity, there may be a basis for a variance, so it addresses some of those standards. And you're gonna see this more often. We've got a couple other ones that are brewing that kind of fit the same mold. It's awful hard to take a historic property and put it into the context of a modern zoning laws without running into problems.
Any more discussion?
So the additions to this, the revisions would be under section three, number one, C, B two A would be renamed to traditional business district.
Transition.
Transitional, excuse me, B three would be general uh business district. And then we'd be adding the B two B, which is the mixed-use corridor.
Which would become, it would be after C and become D?
Yes.
D would become E and E would become F?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Does someone like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to start a public hearing for June twenty-first. Ninety-twenty-three to solicit public input on the proposed zoning amendment to establish the zonal districts for short-term rentals and applicable standards.
A second.
Okay, Rick made the motion. Doug made the second, roll call, or any more discussion? Roll call.
Paul?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Roma?
Yes.
Bradock?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Detmer? McSweeney?
Yes.
Meridian?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Oh, I want to acknowledge Carolyn sent us information about a new type of short-term rental, which is very similar to a bed and breakfast where you could rent a room in your house, but you, the owner of the house is there during the short-term rental. So we discussed that. I think it was with the subcommittee members present. And um, what, what was decided is that uh it would, if we did allow it, it would be through the bed and breakfast language because you're renting a room. Um, and I don't know if we would need to do additional language or if it could just apply through the bed and breakfast licensing.
B and B.
B and B.
Yeah.
So. Anyway, I wanted to acknowledge that we had discussed it, and it sounds like we don't have to write new language for that.
Don't uh B and Bs have open restrictions on how close they can be or?
Yes, yeah, they're, and they're capped at a pretty low number, so, yeah. Alright. Now we are moving on to the cap recommendation. We did not see this, so I didn't have time to do any research or consideration, so I guess I would ask the commission, are you prepared to discuss this and make a recommendation?
If if you didn't get it until today, and I apologize, uh you're gonna have the public hearing on June twenty-first, you can consider the cap, discuss it at that meeting. The 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 planning commission at some point just needs to give the council a recommendation on what you think the appropriate cap is, so I think you still have time if you don't wanna consider it.
Well, are, do people feel ready to consider it? No, okay. Yeah, I don't, it it it. Yeah, so we, we did it at, yeah, forty. After seeing this, does forty still seem like the right number?
Yeah.
So John, are you comfortable with us since we had this discussion prior?
That's fine, you 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 pegged it at forty?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, do we make a motion?
Well.
Or a resolution? Charlie?
Mentioned earlier, I think that it's not just a number, we have to give a rationale. We have to, we have to explain
Right.
our recommendation. So perhaps we should have that discussed in first before we uh
Well, I would say that the rationale is uh fifteen, one intention purposes. Which I have an old version of it, I got lost in the pile of versions, the city council provides a short-term rental dwelling units in the city of Petaskey. Provides value to our local economy, but can also bring with it negative effects to the year-round quality of neighborhoods, housing supply, and public health and safety. The city has enacted this regulatory ordinance, this cap, to strike a regulatory balance between the interests of community residents, business owners, visitors, and property owners. I think that's the justification.
But why forty?
Because there were thirty-three currently. And we figured with the, them only being allowed in the commercial districts. It seems like a uh, number that we could, you know, add to later if we needed, but we wanted to be very calculated, I guess, about how many we initially allowed.
Why not just leave it at thirty-three? I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I guess why would you go through all this if you're not?
Because we need a short-term, because we need a short-term rental ordinance.
So you are proposing?
I'm not proposing it, I'm just, I'm saying.
Uh-huh.
If if we have reasons for picking forty, I think we should stay it up, so council can understand.
Okay, so if we picked
things to me, that we picked an arbitrary number.
Well, the the reason was the government existed and allowed for some, some smaller model.
And and exactly, exactly the census of the
That was, that was the discussion always, for some goal, and then kind of see how it developed.
Yeah.
And reconsider you know, after a year or after two years.
Understanding that growth in short-term rentals takes away, potentially takes away the availability of longer-term housing for residents.
Right, but keep in mind, the new ordinance doesn't allow ADUs or residential housing to become short-term.
I understand that.
Which you you could, that's the rationale for forty, but you could disagree with forty and
I I'm the reason why we picked that number. Is that, that's our housing stock, huh?
Three thousand five hundred and thirty-three, you could cap it at one percent, that'd be thirty-five. And your rationale stated in your master plan that you wanna make
Right.
the residential areas affordable and primarily for long-term residents, so that's your rationale.
I'm, that, that's an argument that I would like to see incorporated in our recommendation, whatever the number is.
Right, so
make it seventy and make it two percent, I don't care, but I think we need to
I think because our housing is, so we're talking about thirty-five hundred. That's such a small stack that we can't afford to give up any of it, so if, so one percent seems like uh that ought to be the limit.
That's, that's making sense to me.
Mm-hmm.
So it allows for two additional?
Yeah.
But keep in mind that the um, the grandfather nineteen will become available licenses going forward.
At some point.
At some point.
Yeah, some.
I, I think there's the all consensus that we wanna tackle this issue slowly.
Mm-hmm.
And, and we're all looking at a, a low, a low number as a starting point, I do recall the, a comment being made that there were conversations with applicants ongoing. And that the forty was, was chosen to incorporate the ones, these discussions ongoing, and I would just again, I'm in support of, of starting out with a very low number, but if we've had conversations with, with any I'm not sure, you know, if you're aware of any, that have made investments in the properties with you, the idea that they're going to
There there are some out there that have been operating as short-term rentals for a while that we don't have licensed. So I had recommended in my letter, and in 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 there's, the numbers are all over the board. But in in terms of trying to keep the cap low, I had recommended uh, anywhere from fifty to seventy-five, but if if the planning commission's comfortable starting at forty, again, the council's the one that establishes that. But I think you had thirty-three, but there are some out there that have been are, are operating as short-term rentals that are not licensed, that once, once the ordinance is passed. Then it's gonna be up to the city to go to them and tap on the door saying, hey, you gotta get licensed.
But we don't know if those are conforming use.
Hold on, but if if they're residential, they would, they can't opt in.
Well, they can opt in, but if there there are, there there could be properties in the commercial district that are operating, they're not licensed. So I I get the one percent, thirty-five, but they don't give you two. And there should be a little bit of latitude to pick up some of the ones that may be out there that are not licensed yet.
But can be.
But can be.
I am very uncomfortable with just doing thirty-five.
Well, I I'm sorry, but I don't have a lot of sympathy for somebody who's operating without a license when the licensing is on the books today.
Well, some people may not know, uh, commissioner.
Right.
I mean
Well, I would like to err on the side of low. So we have thirty was comfortable for everybody, the last conversation we had. I like the idea of not going above one percent, which would put it at thirty-five, but I'm also hearing there may be a need in the areas where it's allowed. So I, I, you know, I'm willing to go forty because that gives them a little more leeway, and again, the city council, if they're, if they decide they, in the commercial areas, there's more than we are guessing. City council can decide whether they wanna um raise the cap to enable those to exist.
Yeah, the city council's gonna decide in any case.
Right.
Okay. Um, but for instance, I would be very comfortable saying that, you know, thirty, thirty-five represents one percent.
Uh-huh.
But in the event that there are other currently unlicensed operations that would conform. Uh, we're recommending that you consider forty to allow for those businesses to to transfer into a properly licensed environment, that's okay with me, but I think that's the kind of explanation I'd like to see accompany the numbers.
Right, okay. Any other discussion?
Well, I would just add that forty is a good number.
Oh, I'm sorry, forty's a good number, I think.
Okay, well, I like what Charlie's suggesting, that we say we'd like to keep it at a one percent cap, cap.
Because of the shortage.
Because of the shortage of housing stock. And um, but if they find the need that going to forty is a reasonable increase, if they feel needed.
Yeah, just for discussion, can I ask John a question? Um, I just wondered what your experience might be, I, as I was thinking about this, um especially in commercial districts, maybe uh second floor, especially like CBD. You know, is there some thing we're missing where some of these might actually work, function that as a short-term rentals, uh, financially work when it's been very difficult to to use them otherwise because of the cost of um the renovation? Is that ever coming, so in other words, it's, it's something that might, you've had these spaces set empty.
Yeah, in uh, well, your neighbor in Harbor Springs, the planning commission there, and I think the city council adopted the ordinance a couple of weeks ago. They do not put a cap on any short-term rentals in their CBD. Their, their cap is only in residential districts. So they currently have, I believe, ninety-one licenses. Sixty-five are in the residential districts and the other thirty are in the uh central business district, but their policy is they don't care how many are in the central business district, as long as they're on, 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 above the first floor. They don't care. They, they're trying to regulate it because it, they, they, they got away from them into the residential district.
Right.
That's where they put the cap on.
Well, I keep hearing, you know, the issue in the CBD with, with these upper floors, and we've talked about the cost of you know, making them long-term rentals, and it's apparently very high, and obviously it seems the short-term models can bring in more income and might make something like that work where it wouldn't otherwise.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's other community, I mean, I've given you an example across the bay.
Yeah, anyway, that's why I didn't, the forty didn't bother me as much, I didn't.
Well, forty looks very conservative in comparison to the
Those down, I mean, you know, the analysis, these are the communities we could find uh, that online, that we could find that actually identified what their cap was. And most, you know, if you take a look at the averages, the average is five point eight percent. So if you're at thirty-five or forty, you're way below what the other communities are currently operating under. Uh, so that's something to consider. Now, like I said, council can establish the cap. If, if you find that as we start really getting an idea of what we got out there. That if it, if it's a if it's not a big issue having short-term rentals in just in the central business district above the first floor. And maybe at some point, you don't wanna include that in the cap. The cap only applies to the districts outside of the central business district.
That would be similar to the parking exempt.
Yeah, because I, I, I agree, you know, I can see where the commissioner's coming from, we do have some second and third floor spaces downtown that are vacant, or that are really underutilized, maybe you know, creating more short-term rentals would improve the property and the investment. It could be used as an incentive to rehab some of the buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but, you know, the idea is, let, let's establish a cap, let's take a look at what's going on, then we can reevaluate. But I think, I think that's a great suggestion.
Well, you brought up a good point that um, looking at the one percent, we're looking at our total housing, including allowing it in our residential.
Mm-hmm.
So the, the numbers that you gave us, like the ninety-one for Harbor Springs, is the cap for their residential?
No, they, they capped it at sixty-five. Yeah.
So all these other short-term renter caps that you guys found, were those for residential or were they for?
These were the caps in, in their, in their citywide in their ordinance, okay, they didn't differentiate.
What was the commission like, Jeremy?
Well, you, you, you need to establish, you need to establish a cap for the number of licenses. My suggestion is, go with what Charlie's position was, Commissioner Romont was saying, let's go tell council thirty-five up to forty, to provide a buffer for conforming non-licensed properties, so that gives you, we have thirty-three, that gives you a buffer of seven. Okay, and that's roughly one point one percent of your housing stock.
But that they could also consider higher numbers in the central business district.
They can, because they can, they, they should be part of what we they established the cap. You're just recommending, and I think your, your policy is, 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 is solid. You wanna keep it around one percent of the, of the thirty-five hundred housing stock. But you are agreeing or saying to them that you're providing a buffer because we, we know, we really don't know, but we probably suspect that there are conforming non-licensed properties out there that we have to bring into the licensing procedure.
Right.
Charlie, do you wanna make that motion?
Well, it's actually, it's actually a resolution.
Okay, great.
And the, the, the resolution normally starts with where-ases, and you've got some where-ases there. Right, and you're, and the intent that you read. Right, and you're in the intent that you read. All right, you know, I, I don't know how thorough we want to make this, but so you have the intent, you read.
Uh, short-term, uh, the city council, no, the short-term rental of dwelling, it's the city of Petoskey, providing value to our local economy. Um, whereas it can also bring with it negative effects the year-round quality of neighborhoods, housing supply and public health and safety. Um, the planning commission is recommending this regulatory ordinance to strike a regulatory balance between the interests of community, resident, business owners, visitors, and property owners.
How about a whereas in there? Whereas the housing stock in Petoskey today is thirty-five hundred units.
Yeah, three thousand five hundred thirty-three.
Whereas current licensed short-term rentals equal thirty-three.
Mm-hmm.
The the recommendation is uh, for forty
Mm-hmm.
conforming use and potentially higher in the central business district.
I'm glad there's no
Is that
Does that work for you, Ted? Very. So Charlie's provided the resolution. We need a second. We need a second for that.
I'll second, I'm just confused about this discussion. We're simply making a recommendation.
In the form
Resolutions are formed by city, passed by city council. City council passes resolutions and amendments, yes.
So, all right.
But I'll second that.
All right, as it is, because we're writing this, do you want it uh, in a different format?
I don't really care. Well, you can make a recommendation with the whereas as in. Right, just call it a recommendation.
Right, okay. So this is officially a recommendation.
That's great.
Charlie, seconded by Ted. And uh, any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Bradak? Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
Detmer?
Yes.
McSweeney?
Yes.
Maridian?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Roma?
Yes.
All right. Now, oh, what did I do? We are Oh. Want to make a comment? Oh, well, did everybody get a chance to read this letter?
I did.
Okay. Um, this is a letter from Amber Mero. Uh, she lives at four eleven Monero Street as an owner of a short-term rental. And um, is objecting to the fact that we're not going to continue allowing them in the residential area. However, is she a licensed operator at this time? Okay, so then in her case, she wouldn't be allowed to continue if this is passed.
That address is not on the list that the city has for grandfathered.
Oh, you know what? She I purchased my home and property. I live next door to a blighted property.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this location is a short-term rental. I think she would like to be
Oh, I
at some point, but she's not currently.
Okay. So this is someone who would like the right in the um, in the future to allow residents a short-term rental, but I do think we've established that we have to protect our housing for long-term residents. All right, moving on to public comment. A public comment for uh, is Albert Moss back on? So if he would like to make the comment that he wanted to make.
Yeah, I just, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just, uh, I, I really think the idea of the subcommittee is a good one. Um, my only concern is that uh, as, as John said, and John, I'd say your last name, but I think I'd butcher it. Um, is will stuff come forward enough for the public to see it and have changes? As you know, you didn't have a lot of people on this, that coming to uh, planning commissions till the B three A issue came up. And it was good that it was always out in front of us. So um, yeah, as John said, these, these two issues that the subcommittee is looking at are things that are meaningful to the city of Petoskey, and they're meaningful to the public. And so I just want to make sure that um, with it not being, because you're keeping it to four, um, you, you're not, have the open meeting act, but the stuff will come forward such that the public does get to put input at some time into changes being made.
Yes, yes, the, the um, the subcommittees will meet and create rough drafts, and then those will be presented to the full commission. And we will have discussion, and when we have those discussions, we'll also allow public comment.
Okay. That was my only comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to weigh in? All right, uh, moving on to uh, commissioner comments. I think we're all talked out. All right, so updates, you provided us, John, with um, zoning permits, you know, a kind of oh, Lisa did, our zoning administrator provided us with activities that happened January through April, which is something we requested to be included during updates. So do you have anything to say about it, Lisa?
My goal is to get you this report each month, so that each month you can see, if you guys want to see what the tally is for the year, or if you want to see how that compares, um, just let me know.
Okay.
And I'm happy to.
Can you include uh, ADU applications as, as well?
Yes.
Have we had any?
We have one. Well, actually, we have, yeah, we have one. We had an application for one, um, but nothing, she got approval, but nothing has um, happened with it, so.
Okay, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ted?
Yeah, I just have one question for Lisa and John. Uh, I, I don't believe we, we solved the issue of the urgent care by the school with the fence. Um, has does anyone know where that's at?
I do not. Um, yeah. Right, right across from McDonald's.
Yeah.
There's a school, a monster.
The issue was, um, at the time of approval, they were told that they needed to have a screening fence for the playground, that people didn't think it was adequate, that cars could park and potentially view the kids on the playground and um, not be there just, so that never got done. Um, when did the facility open? Last summer?
Yeah.
Yeah, and um, they, uh, apparently there was some discussion that materials were an issue, or it was hard to get stuff, but it's been such a long time now, we just need to follow up with that.
Was that agreed upon during the site plan review?
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
And we, we should, we should, I'll follow up.
Just I heard, um, the city planner was in contact with the um, manager. And they were, apparently it was on order and they were waiting for it, so um, we can definitely follow up on that.
Okay.
All right, any other updates? Okay.
I don't have any.
All right, all right. So we may adjourn at, at eight forty. This is a long one. A shorter meeting?